I call the May 7, 2024 Regular Council meeting to order at 7:00 PM. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Myers.
Here.
DeShawn.
Here.
Shireman.
Here.
Maritz.
Here.
Sherrick.
Here.
Hickman.
Here.
Me.
Here.
Before your own minutes from the April 16, 2024 Regular Council meeting, does anybody have any questions on the minutes? See, none need a motion to approve.
They can both approve it.
I second.
Chris made the motion. Carolyn seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed. The Service Director has asked me to see about moving speakers number one, two, and three on the agenda up before granting permission for visitors to speak, so in the essence of time, he wanted to get them out of there. Can we have a motion to amend the agenda and move?
So moved.
Kevin made the motion. Zion seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, at this time, we will have Mr. Zack from the Crawford Partnership.
Hey. This is Matt from the Crawford County. Great. So good to be here. I don't know where the background is, but we're over here. Dave Zack, President of the Crawford County. Very good to be here. Again, this is our regularly scheduled quarterly updates. We do a quarterly report and one after the quarter, which is the power results, talk about what we've been up to and how we're trying to improve these sites on Crawford County. And then following that, we set the time for me coming to talk. I postponed the last week's official decisions. So tonight, as opposed to the last time, when it's kind of the end of the year, it's going to be shorter. Certainly want to come in in person and answer any questions you may have as well. I would be remiss if I didn't start by thanking, it could be more ongoing report of the city for what we do. We could do what we do, so we appreciate it and we consider it a privilege to do our work, work together every day and figure out what we make of such people. One of the many major organizations trying to do that. So the agenda, we're going to cover four quick things before I see if there are any questions I'm happy to answer. One is talk about our kind of focus goal for the year. So every year, we try to focus on something, how can we, obviously, we'll come into projects and issues, but our wildly important goal to kind of increase our capacity, increase our technical deficiencies, to talk about what we're doing this year, talk about a little bit about scope metrics and what that looks like in terms of some of the progress that we're making. We'll talk about some of the press releases that we put out and what it looks like for the city of Bucyrus. And a little insight into our project pipeline, including a kind of geographic distribution of how the projects around the pipeline look distributed throughout the county specifically for the city of Bucyrus. So we're going to cover the picture on the first one, the first slide, was the first Innovate Crawford event we had. So the very first slide, I don't know where the background of the mouse, I apologize. That very first picture on the slide was, we brought in a patent attorney Jake Ward for our first bringing resources into the county. You used to have to put a fleet out for the flea hunt for Mansfield to go interact with people that can help you start because this was a crash course in electric property. It's free. We made it free available. We hooked it on to the chambers, we have an electronic plate that practice, so it's a big space. Again, it was our first attempt to bring in resources here in the metropolitan status. Okay, that picture of the quarter is the cover of Site Slash Magazine, and we're Crawford County ranked in about 30% of all non-metro counties, a couple of micropolitans with a number of qualifying larger number of projects. I love this. I don't think it's a silver bullet statistic, but it tells compared the amount of activity with other communities like us across the nation. And we have five major projects, so we're punching above our weight number 16 out of 542. So that's the cover, and that comes out in March. So we heard that news in the first quarter, March 1st, it always comes out, so we're happy to share that news. Our focus goal, we're working on it this year, really defining workforce development and getting a clear idea of how we're going to help companies access the talent that's here locally, and how we're going to expose to you and those adults to the great career opportunities that are here locally, and so getting some definition on that. And then we're also working to build our community development practice. So those are kind of the focus goals. What did we do in the first quarter of local development? So we've defined, the first four things listed are how we're defining we're working with companies in the area of workforce development. We're also working on a lot of programs and issues, but what are the services, what are the things that we can help with? One, open positions. Company has open positions, whether it's one, whether it's five, whether it's 10, 20. We can provide them access to resources, either refer them or make connections to promote ourselves. Those open positions, whether it's Ohio many jobs or other resources that are free, how can we help them with their open positions? Two, we are helping companies build their talent pipeline. So yes, they have open positions now, but how are they connecting with a local school? Thank you, South City Schools in Flintford and Co. Poppers. So those kids become exposed to that, and they don't actually have to go to a big city. This is a great city. It doesn't have to be a big city to be a great city. How can the great opportunities that are here? So those are talent pipeline projects, and there are other sources of talent. So how do we help them build that pipeline, expose youth and adults to what they have to offer, train projects? How can they upskill their existing workers? You know, I'd like to say there's not a lot of free money around, but there is money for training through a variety of programs. And how do we help them upskill their existing workers to get access to these programs? And then last but not least, when we have a project, we can help develop a project, playing together the letters and offers and systems, how we can support that project to move forward in Bucyrus and move toward our county. Lisa Markham, our Work Personnel Manager, is the one that is heading up these particular services to companies. So again, getting a little more clarity on what we help the companies, what can Lisa do for you? If you have one of those needs, we can assist you. Teacher manufacturing boot camp coming up in the second quarter. So those companies are now done, that's going to be June 10 through the first week through the 25th. That's where teachers get credit through Ashland University to visit with our manufacturers in Bucyrus, in Crawford County, and basically have to develop curriculum for the class that integrates what they're learning, and so that's why they get credit for it. It costs you nothing to the teachers this year. It's all being sponsored, so the teachers can get their continuing education credits, do those kind of professional development, it won't cost schools anything, it won't cost them anything. So it's great. It really opens their mind up to what's going on from an economic development perspective with these great companies. Kind of comrades this notion that it's dirty manufacturing, no, these are advanced manufacturing. It's high tech. These are great careers. So it really exposes them and opens the teachers. And of course, teachers are the front line and really talking to the kids. And so really, you know, there are a lot of great options, and certainly manufacturing is one great environment. Lisa also got, there was a new national certification from the International Economic Development and Workforce Development, and she was one of the first people in that cohort took her exam and passed her certification, so we're able to lead this in professional development. So Lisa, even though she's new, had her ITC certification in local development. Business Advisory Council, so we continue to bring the schools together, the six districts in the county just met today, and we're working together on how to align the educational system with the needs of the business community. And that's something we facilitate and work on projects to get our initiatives. And then a lot of the penalties, Area 10 Russian Crawford Board, we continue to get funding from that and participate actively. All of the federal money through the state goes to Area 10, that's Oscar Richardson County. I've said multiple times, we need to take a little administrative money. Our job and family services was already supported, but they also got support from someone like Lisa. Now that funding comes from that source. So that team member is not funded by the private sector here, not funded by the public sector, it's funded outside the county for resources to help our businesses and our schools right here in Bucyrus and Crawford County. So that's, and then moving to the community development, how do we build that? So state capital budget, so we submitted 13 projects to the House of Representatives that were going to claim, and then we worked continually with those. Some projects were through, some projects didn't want to be forward, and we ended up submitting six to the Senate. We got, I think, over 40 letters of support for those projects and begun setting the system. You get tons of letters of support, and really, you're competing. We're competing. There were over, I think, 116 projects submitted to the Senate District number four. That's Representative, that's Senator Reineke's district. So we want our projects to stand out, and part of that is through local support, and so we're doing that. So that's the cover of a very large package. One of the projects, including a trail on Almilla Park, this was the Bucyrus Y, we're working with nonprofits, we're working with a bunch of different people, and a number of those projects were in Bucyrus, including the Laximania Park, including the Almilla Trail, including the Bucyrus Y, and so et cetera. And we're putting those together and made the press, all four of the six projects are geographic in the city of Bucyrus. So certainly, I feel like we're working really hard for you and trying to work on all of the cities in Bucyrus, Crawford County as well. Then you see, and that's part of the process, I mentioned, we need to help Black Forest to manage that, and we put out a bid for the Tyro Washere Bridge project. Again, it's in the county, but we're working to continue to do that. Downing Deep Road Project, we got a Job Ohio Grant for that, so that's going to happen, you know, something there. We'll be counting wide, bringing money here, bringing money everywhere, and then continue staff training. Our own Nancy Clutter is in the process of becoming a certified community development specialist, which is going to handle our background paperwork as she passed her first exam. She's taken two more, and she has two more classes to go, and she'll have her certification. So our staff likes the fact that we're investing in them, so they can invest in you and provide the service. So, I was going to say next slide. Okay, primary metrics. So looking at how we're doing on some of the things, we will start reporting on jobs and investment in this after the second quarter, but in terms of, I talked about the house metric. So we are right now the number two non-metropolitan fourteen counties in the number of qualifying business retention, business outreach visits. We're going to be number one by the end of the year. This is fine, but we're number two right now, so I'm always about moving forward, right? Out of 14. So we are very aggressive, and we'll continue to do that, and our goal is to be the number one in Northwest Ohio. And last year, we even beat out some of the major metro areas. So we're looking to double the number of outreach visits that qualify for Jobs Ohio this year than what we did last year. So we're going to, and if you talk to any companies, you're reaching out to them, you're meeting with them, which often takes a lot to get in there and build that relationship, that's how you figure out you can help them, right? That's the important thing. Sometimes it takes a while to build a relationship, and when you add value, they trust you, and you can be a part of that process of making decisions of whether or not they think this is going to work in Bucyrus. Then we did nine press releases, generated 50 stories in the media. So our goal for the year is 100 stories, so a very good first quarter. We think that's due to some of the, we found that the local and regional media are really clued in. When we send out something, they like to put it out. It's good content. So we've really built those media relationships, and so now they're really putting out even more than it was in 2022 and 2023. We're getting a lot of traction. So you lead, that's the leadership program in the county that we run, which is really about, let's say, talk about leadership program, for those of you who aren't familiar with it, very experiential learning, where you're a day, you're all over the county, you're getting to know the county. So all the time is connect them to the community. This isn't John Maxwell or the principles of leadership. This is about learn what great stuff's going on here, whether it's economically or in service, so that you can serve at the end and bring in Bucyrus and other nonprofits who have opportunities for services. And then those people that graduate, join a board, serve, you know, practice that leadership. So you have up and coming people who are, whatever their organization, public and private, that's where they get those leadership skills, benefits to employers, but also benefits of community. Use science, I talked about this, so we are hoping sometime in the next few weeks to absolutely finalize and launch Use Science. The current plan is, although it's not final final, is that the schools will launch in the fall, and we're going to start getting all the companies in this national level local development platform. What it does is allow kids to take abilities tests at the school, and what they do is they also put their interests, and what we find is their interests and their abilities are sometimes, we call them exposure gap. Why? Because everybody wants to be a video game designer or a social media influencer. A lot of them have great for utilities or construction, manufacturing, or healthcare that they never thought about. But this is truly scientifically designed to show them that, and then we take that information and design work-based learning that exposes them to those kinds of experiences. For example, in a district in a county away, they had, in six years of using this platform, they doubled the number of kids going into school trades, because those skills are, those kids are getting exposed to this, and kids are thinking about, what am I good at? Not just, what have I seen in my own experience? So we're really excited about this. All the schools on board, the partners supporting it. So we think soon, in the next week or so, we'll be able to announce it's official. At least it's going to be assisting companies, companies, they'll put their job out, they'll put what's a date in the life of this job, how much it pays, how much post-secondary education is required. And so kids will be able to, and then those jobs will pop up based on their abilities and their interests, and they can sort by how much additional education they want to do. So it's really designed to be great. So our job is to get the companies, so that when kids take it in the fall, they're going to see what local opportunities are. So we're going to work to carry it out well. Innovate Crawford, I talked about that, that was an entrepreneurial program. Right now, we're working with a small business development, a line-up, a small business basic. So they're based in Ashland County, Ashland University, so we want to bring them here for people thinking about starting a business, who is like doing that. And then Crawford Business Exchange, this is a platform, more anonymously, people that want to retire can put their business up for sale. What we do is they call us, we kind of pre-vet it a little bit, we share that information with the business owner, and then they can call anybody they're interested in. We had two leads in the first quarter. One is, one sale of the business is going to be finalized. I won't say we caused the sale, but we certainly helped in promoting the opportunity, so I would count that as an indirect success. And one of them is still underway. We should have one within the next few weeks, a third lead through that particular platform. Okay, press releases, we had nine. I already talked about the top three, the recent development. We do press releases on projects. We do it on many things. We can, our main thread, butter, anytime anybody's opening a business, anytime anybody's investing in their business, anytime they're expanding their business or starting a business, we want to tell them. And what you see there is, okay, Edward Jones expands its Bucyrus operations, great. It's not a factory with $10 million, but they're still insulting, Edward Jones expands its Bucyrus operations. So people in Mansfield, be there, the more projects you have, oh, there's something going on there. Businesses open up, and you get people kind of enhancing their pro-business, pro-development reputation. That's why we do these releases and these stories. You know, they may not remember one, but after the hundredth one, they see, they believe, right? So we're very much a trip. We're going to continue to pummel them with positive stories about business growth, business startup, and business expansion in Bucyrus and throughout Crawford County, and then there are a variety of others. And then last but not least, uh-oh. If I, I was on such a good trajectory. All right. Sorry about that. Probably broke it. Let's see here. Okay, project pipeline. So we, I have been reporting since we started, we're reporting on project pipeline. So these are projects that we're working on. If you recall, you go back to the end of 2023, they had about 198 projects in the pipeline. What we've done is we've refined what we're reporting. So we have a kind of a stage funnel where there are leads. So we took all the leads, these are things we've heard about, or we haven't verified that they have a project actively looking for a possibility in Crawford County. So we took that out, obviously, and there are 29 active leads that includes the state level Jobs Ohio searches. So we're looking anywhere in Ohio for, you know, 30 acres to say. So we're not including this in this 98 number, we are tracking it, but we're not including in kind of the active project pipeline. So qualified projects are projects that are close to announcing but haven't announced yet. The ones that we're still working, because once a project announces, there's still oftentimes things to do, we're not including in this number. So what this number really represents is active projects that have a potential to be announced, or we're working to try to get them to make a decision. So it's a more, a finer grain look at what really, how many companies or businesses are actively looking potentially to do something, and oftentimes is not in the not-so-distant future. As you can tell on the right, you see manufacturing, still leads with 40% of all our projects, projects on manufacturing, the rest of it's kind of distributed among the different industries. But if you look at the right, you're going to see distribution, so about half of the projects we're working on right now are in the city of Bucyrus. And so if things are outside the city limits, we track it as a rural Crawford County project, even if it's relatively close. So these are projects, we geocode everybody's specific base on the tax parcel ID number where they're located. So there is a lot of very, very positive activity going on in the city of Bucyrus. And the last slide, I didn't include because I didn't want to leave the paper, we have them slightly bigger with my contact information. That's my cell phone. Anybody who wants to call me, happy to have a coffee as well, but it's available. So with that, I'll end and see if there are any questions.
Don't see any questions.
Okay, awesome. Thank you all very much. I appreciate you.
Thank you.
Next up is a Mr. Reebar from Serv Line.
I'd like to really thank the council, members of the city staff. This is not working. Thank you very much, members of council, members of city staff here. My name is Mike Chambers, and this is Chris Reebar, and we work with HomeServ, and we administer the National League of Cities Service Line program, and really wanted to come here tonight to just kind of give you an update on the program, as well as thank you for your partnership. You've been a partner with us since 2013. We currently work with about 1,300 communities across the country, including around 50 here in Ohio, and Bucyrus was actually the number five, the fifth community to adopt it. So you're very early adopters, and we appreciate it, and it's really helped to grow the program. But basically, a little bit, just give you a quick overview of, you know, what we do, and then Chris is going to give you an update, you know, specifically to your city. So we work with the National League of Cities to make our service line warranty products available for your residents. And, you know, the reason kind of how this all got started is, everybody here stands that infrastructure is getting older and older, especially when it comes to the water and sewer lines. And one of the big issues is while the cities are doing their part to maintain those main water and sewer lines during the street, you have these miles and miles of lines that connect to that system, that a lot of times they don't get any attention until there's an issue, and that's those resident service lines. And a lot of times when the resident has a frozen water line that breaks, or their sewer line collapsed, first thing they do is call their city. You'll have to go out there, check the line in the street, making sure that's working properly, and typically that is, and then that puts the city kind of being the bad bearer of bad news, Mr. and Mrs. Resident, we found the issue, it's your portion of the line that's causing that problem. And a lot of times residents can become upset because they don't realize they're responsible for these buried lines until they have these issues, and then even the residents that do realize they're responsible, they don't have the funds to pay it. Sometimes these can be $5,000, $6,000, $7,000 to dig them up and replace it. So that's where our program comes in. First off, we educate your residents, we do a free public awareness campaign to all the homeowners, letting them know that these lines are their responsibility, and then also make a warranty available for them if they choose to enroll in it, to cover that for them. The nice part for your residents is it's all completely optional, so residents can, you know, pick and choose the products that we do have, but we do offer an external water line coverage, which covers their whole water line from where it enters the home all the way up to the curb stop, covers leaking lines, broken lines, frozen lines, basically any disruption in their water service. There's no deductible on that program, and there's also no service fees. And then the second product is the sewer line coverage, and that'll cover their entire sewer line from where it enters the home all the way to the main, and that covers everything from a simple cleanout, something splashed down there, or all the way up to, you know, replacing that line, even repairing any kind of public concrete as well. When the resident does have an issue, all they do is call us. We have a 24-hour-a-day, seven-day-a-week call center that always answers with a live person. They'll file the claim, and then we'll dispatch that job to a local contractor here in the area to do the work. That helps keep the dollars here locally in the community, but more importantly, we want to make sure the lines get fixed the way the city wants, so using the local contractors, they know the codes, the permits, and all that sort of thing. The way we make the program available to your residents, I always get the question or, you know, do the residents get, we never do any kind of telemarketing, so you don't have to, you know, worry about them getting any calls or anything from us. Everything's done through a direct mail educational letter, which we provide to the city, and you have an opportunity to review it before that ever happens, so. But I'm going to turn it over to Chris now, and he's going to share some statistics with you.
And I was also going to mention, we've been working with Tommy since Jeff Wagner left within the last period of time. We actually had a mailer go out recently in the community about two weeks ago. We have another mailer coming out this coming Thursday that will be mailed out, probably about seven to 10 days after that. We do have the materials to leave behind with you guys, but to give some of the statistics, we have over 150 customers in Bucyrus that are in the program currently, over 220 policies that are purchased through those over 150 customers. There's about 3% of the population right now that are using the product. That was something we've actually talked with Tommy about, working to kind of improve or increase. Since the program has been with the city for about 11 years to this point, it's things like getting new residents in and getting a newer mailing list, and maybe getting some things, social media, brochures, which we sent through as well, and just making sure that we're getting that name out there again of what the product does, how we can help out the residents in the city, and what the programs really they're meant to do. We also have completed 56 repairs with the program. Over $71,000 has been saved through the program with these residents. But again, the biggest thing that we're trying to do is really get that name out there again. With it being here for 11 years, it's been a success, and as Mike mentioned, we went from a lower number of total in the state to over 50 different partners in the state currently. So it's a program that's being used, it's endorsed by the National League of Cities, but it's something, like I said, we wanted to come and talk with the community, because it's been a while since we've been here. And it's one of those things where we want to make sure that everybody in the area knows what the program does, how it can benefit them, and then also, it is a voluntary program, so if the residents are interested, they can sign up for that coverage. The other thing to let everybody know as well was, since the launch of the program, as Mike had mentioned, currently, we do offer a water service line coverage and a sewer service line coverage for the city. We've actually added some products since the start of the program with the city. We now also include a program that deals with interior plumbing and drainage, so that covers anything within the house, the pipes, for not only the water, for the sewer, for anything inside the house. And then we do actually offer a water heater program as well. So really, it was wanting to come out and speak with you guys about kind of currently what's going on with the mailers and with what we're providing to the residents about the program, but also talking about steps moving forward, ways that we can kind of get the information out, whether it be, again, social media, the web, whether it be doing things within the community, whether it be even things like different mailers and different other things that we can do, physical brochures, which we provided, but just really providing a way forward for the city with the program. Like I said, to this point, it's been successful, but we want it to grow larger, and we want to be able to provide that background and those updates for the city as well. So again, we do have leave behind materials for the city that talk about what the program has done, also what we can do as far as additional marketing materials and things that we can do for the residents here. But again, we just really wanted to come out and speak to what the program's done with the city so far, say thank you to the city for having us, but then also just see what else we can do as far as the city goes, and offer, you know, additional insight into how the program's worked and what we could do to be better with it. So, did want to see if there was any questions or anything about the program?
So you have prices?
Correct. So the water service line program is $5.53 per month. The sewer is $7.53 per month.
And this would be added right onto our water bill, or would it be separate?
Yeah, it's all separate, so we handle all the billing for that, so.
Okay.
Yeah, we mail it out to them. And residents can pay a variety of different ways. They can pay by the year if they want to, or they can put a credit card on file, have a deducted monthly or quarterly, you know, however they choose.
Any other questions? Thank you for coming.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. We would have some leave behind for you so far.
Next up, we have a Mr. Hartel, Hartley, from the Ohio Regional Development Corp.
Thank you. My name is Dale Hartle. I'm the president of Ohio Regional Development Corporation. Mr. President, Mayor, members of council, members of the public, thank you for allowing[1722.50] Mr. President, Mayor, members of council, members of the public, thank you for allowing me to spend just a few minutes and talk to you tonight. Sounds to me like this is community development evening. So that's a good thing, you know? And I have something to talk to you about community development as well. It's different than theirs, or largely so. Our organization has worked in Crawford County for quite a large number of years. And we were hired again this year to apply for a CHIP program, Community Housing Improvement Program. And I spoke with the mayor recently and one of his staff was at a first public hearing that we held because we're, in order to apply for the funds, we have to hold two public hearings. We'll be holding the second one on May the 9th at 1:00 PM in the county conference room. But the CHIP program, I wanna just tell you, it won't be long, but I wanna tell you just a little bit about it. The national objective is to partner with Ohio communities to preserve and improve affordable housing stock for low-to-moderate-income Ohioans and strengthen neighborhoods through community collaboration, providing direct benefit to low-to-moderate-income households and so on. Crawford County is going to apply for $1 million this year. And they are eligible for that on the basis of Crawford County, 300,000, uh, I'm sorry, 400,000 for Crawford County, 300,000 for the City of Bucyrus, and 300,000 for the City of Galleon. There are several types of things, activities that can be done. We won't be able to do them all, but here are the possibilities. Owner rehabilitation, $85,000 per unit can be spent, up to that amount. We don't just go in and say, "You get 85,000," but we do it based upon the things that need to be done. And so with that, we have to address every need in the home. The last gentleman's talked about water lines and sewer lines, and those are certainly a real need. And so we would address those if they need to be addressed, if they need to be dealt with. There's a mortgage put on the home for five years. At the end of the five years, it goes away. It is at no cost to the people. The program is predicated upon people being low-to-moderate-income. So I don't have that number with me exactly. I'll have it at the second public hearing, but roughly $45,000 for one person living in the household, up to about $50,000 for the second person, if there are two people in the household, and it climbs on up from there. So if they qualify, they have to qualify by income, and if that's the case, there's no charge to them. We can do sewer lines, personal sewer lines out to the city tap, or water lines, or things of that nature. And as the last speaker spoke, those are often needs that definitely need to be addressed, you know, so they have a good program as well. There is no payback for the owner rehab. There's a mortgage for five years, and that's just to keep them from getting $85,000, putting the house on the market and selling it. The mortgage goes away at the end of five years. Rental rehabilitation is the same amount, $85,000. That's a little more difficult to do because the state requires that the owner of the rehab has to pay 50% of the cost. But the people who, the people who live in the unit have to meet the income requirement. The owner of the property does not have to meet the income requirement, just the people who live there. Owner home repair is one of the most, one of the most popular programs. We're allowed to spend up to $30,000 per unit. And if we do that, there is no, there is no mortgage put on the home and there are no requirements other than they have to be income qualified. And so we can typically do two, maybe three, types of projects in the house for that amount of money. Might be a furnace, might be, it might be a hot water system, it might be an electrical upgrade, or various things of that nature. But unfortunately today, $30,000 doesn't go very far. Since the days of COVID, it's, those costs have gone up immensely. It used to be that we could spend about $18,000 for home repair. And when COVID hit, the price of materials went sky high. Somehow they've never come back down. But anyway, that's home repair. Rental repair is exactly the same thing. The only difference is that the owner of the home has to pay half of the cost. The person who lives there has to qualify with their income. Homeownership and down payment assistance is the next one. And we can assist people in buying a home. There's a little caveat to that. We can spend $85,000 per unit. They have to meet the same income guidelines if we assist them. But let me give you a hypothetical. We, let's say that we assist someone with maybe $10,000 of down payment assistance. That leaves $75,000 left. And with that, when we leave that house, it has to be brought up to the state's standards. And so the more you spend on down payment assistance, the less is, the less amount is, lesser amount is available to spend on refurbishing the house, and they have to meet the state's standards. The last one is tenant-based rental assistance, and we can spend up to $12,000 per person. These are typically people that are receiving assistance from a housing authority, normally in this case, in the case of a voucher. And so one of the requirements is that the housing authority or whoever's providing that assistance has to assure us, assure the state, that they have sufficient vouchers to go on beyond the end of our assistance. And so however long $12,000 will go toward that person's rent, the state does not want them to be put out the door when this assistance is done. Has to be an ongoing voucher. Past performance of Crawford County has normally been pretty good. The date of the application to the state is June the 20th of '24. Our office is preparing that application. There will be a second public hearing, as I already mentioned. And we will need you to, and I spoke with the mayor about this, we will need you to pass a resolution to join in with the county on this. There's one other thing that I would, that I would mention to you. I mentioned earlier that Crawford County is eligible for 400,000, 300,000 for the City of Bucyrus, 300,000 for Galleon. Crawford County Commissioners would be the applicant, and it will all be run through your, their books. It won't run through your books at all. And as, as representative who has operated these programs for many years, we always work very diligently to be sure that, in your case, you would have $300,000 spent on programs, on houses within the City of Bucyrus. The same for Galleon, and then 400. You know, it's just good political sense to spend the money where it's supposed to be. And so that's, that's how we work on it. The last thing that I would say is that I really enjoyed hearing about the programs that the other speakers had this morning. But there's a program that I was eminently involved in a few years ago in Bucyrus that we were very proud of. And that is that we tore down the old theater, we built Shine's Park, and spent hundreds and hundreds of hours. And as the one gentleman spoke about getting grants from the state legislature on that, that's a wonderful thing and I wish him well on that. But we had grants in two different years for Shine's Park. I don't know how many of you were on council at that time or whatever, but that is always a great thing to do, to get the legislature to buy into a project you're doing, so. Are there any questions? Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
People applying for this grant, who would they get in contact with? Do you have a phone?
We will send out, we will send out information on the internet. We'll have mailers, we'll have information in the mayor's office, in the county commissioners, and in the mayor's office in Galleon.
Thank you.
Yes. Any others? I appreciate your time to be here tonight and look forward to working with you. Thank you.
So we need a resolution then?
We need a referral to economic development for the CHIP grant.
I'll make a motion for a referral to the economic development.
Chris, or Aaron made the motion, Chris seconded, all favor. All opposed. Okay, moving back on to the regular agenda. The next part of this meeting, somebody has requested extended time to speak ahead of time due to the subject of their discussion. I've talked to the law director and he hasn't told me that I can't preside over this. However, I have been told I can't comment on certain things and possibly not deliberate on certain things. So in order to keep the city from possibly getting in trouble, I am going to turn the rest of the meeting over to the pro temp council president, which would be Mr. Myers. And I'm gonna go into a 60-second recess here and then come back with Mr. Myers sitting in his chair at, I'm going into recess at 7:40 PM.
I call a meeting back to order. The time is 7:41 PM and we're gonna continue. We have a letter submitted by Mr. Dennis Tiner. Do you have that to read, Miranda?
Yeah. Did you wanna do the granting of permission for visitors to speak first, or? I had assumed that we just moved those three up and then?
So this is the time that we will allow permission for visitors to speak. Anybody that wishes to address council, when they come to the podium, state your name and address.
Greg White, 1125 Hill Crest Drive. I did read Mr. Dennis Tiner's letter. I thought it was a very great letter to bring out to the citizens and to this council. I hope Thursday night during Finance Committee that we can get together and start working on the major problem that we need to work with in the City of Bucyrus. Remember, you only have less than 90 days, 90 days, to put anything on the ballot. So I hope everybody comes together and brings your numbers and we can sit down hopefully Thursday night and during Finance Committee and start working out the details of what we actually really need to do for the city to make sure that everything is covered. Thank you.
Mr. White, a couple of us met this morning with the administration just to start getting those numbers ready for Thursday, so it will be on the agenda. Anybody else wish to address council? All right, hearing none, we'll move back into communications and petitions. And now I'll ask you to read the letter from Mr. Dennis Tiner.
Bucyrus City Council, my name is Dennis Tiner. I live at 524 Prospect Street. I have been a resident of the City of Bucyrus for more than 54 years and raised my family here. This is a great city to live in. It is clear that we have a looming budget crisis looming once again. This didn't happen overnight and it won't be resolved overnight. I was the appointed service safety director in April 20th, 2011, 13 years ago to the day as I write this letter. We had a crisis then too. It came with the closing of General Motors in Ontario, Baja Boats, and Checkmate had closed, and the Swan Rubber was the shadow of what they were. We had a huge shortage of the general fund. The city had lost a substantial amount of revenue with that many citizens losing their jobs and cuts. Meanwhile, the State of Ohio cut out, cut out estate tax revenue and were cutting and eliminated local government funding. We were in a world of hurt. The administration worked with the auditor and the city council to come up with a solution. There was but one option for us. As the city service safety director, I had the unpleasant duty of laying off personnel. The shortfall was in the general fund as it is today. Police and firemen were the option we had, and we were forced to lay members of these departments off. My blood pressure was through the roof with how, with many sleepless nights, but we had no other viable option. We did what we had to do. Jump ahead 13 years, here we are again. More business closures the past several years, BPT closed, and now General Electric, General Electric has shuttered the doors. We can't control that. We can't control big business. We hear bring in new business. Every community our size has a building empty begging business to come. The state is still cutting local revenues gradually, eliminating the state income tax, and there is talk of limiting or eliminating local income taxes. We are once again in a world of hurt. Meanwhile, the State of Ohio is sitting on a rainy day fund of $3.7 billion. That's a three with nine zeros after it. The last year alone, this fund has gained 174.7 million dollars. They seem to be willing to sit on this cash stash while willing to see small cities and villages wither away. That problem is not our fault. We seem to be taking our safety forces to task for the wages they earn and the hours they work, who today wants to go back to the ambulance services we had, have had in the past where they sometimes seemed to get lost crossing the street. The men serving this community are well-trained and care about serving you. We need their services. Several months ago, Alice and I were victims of a home invasion. Someone was in our home. We were robbed at 3:00 AM. I called the police, and within less than five minutes, the police were there with two cruisers. While one officer took the information, the second officer went looking for the intruders. When the tornado hit, these men were looking out for everyone's safety. Several weeks ago, a city worker was seriously injured on the job. Two vehicles with four men arrived with an ambulance. It took all four to stabilize him and get him to critical care, possibly saving his life. Who today wants to go back 13 years when we had short shifts for our safety forces with sometimes only one cruiser on patrol overnight or three men on duty at the fire station? Who wants to force this council, the mayor, and the service director into sleepless nights worrying about our community's safety because of laying people off once again? I watch all of our council and committee meetings. We seem to be stuck on pointing fingers. We seem to be bickering like children on the playground, fighting over whose ball it is over the Bratwurst Festival and its funds. Folks, there is an elephant in the room, and it isn't the Bratwurst Festival. You are already obligated with the funding for the Bratwurst Festival Services for this year. You have already voted in committee to end the contract with the Bratwurst Festival Services contract, giving the one-year notice as required. It appears to be a done deal if you pass it in full council. You have a year to work out the next year. Let's move on to that elephant. Actually, a herd of elephants, the EPA and wastewater plant, trash and water rates, et cetera. Most importantly, we need to move on to the biggest elephant, the looming shortage in the general fund. 13 years ago, council and its leadership, the mayor, the service director, and former directors, former councilmen of various citizens committees, worked together to find a solution out of the bind that we were in. Administration's changed during this process. Both old and new worked together to get this done. With the work that we passed, the first safety forces levy, it took work, but the goal was accomplished. We seem to be in the midst of another perfect storm. No one asked for this, no one wants this, not everyone will be happy with the solution. Do I want to pay more taxes? No, but if, I will if necessary. Again, work together and stop the bickering. We, you, I, they, them, all need to come together once again, and as former mayor Roger Moore promised, build a better Bucyrus. Is the solution rescinding the out-of-town worker tax credit, another income tax, a property tax levy? Is it new industry? Is it annexation? Is it lobbying our state representatives? I don't know the answer, but it is time to get together, stop bickering, and get to work on that elephant. Signed, former safety service director, Dennis J. Tiner.
I need a motion to accept and file that letter. I have a motion by Ms. Sherrick, second by Mr. Hickman. All favors, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same? All right, next letter is from the Ohio Division of Liquor Control.
Dear local legislative authority official, please find enclosed legislative notice that is being sent to you regarding the applied for liquor permit as captioned on the notice. You must win, within 30 days from the mail date on the notice under the barcode, one, notify the division whether you object and want a hearing, or two, ask for your one-time, only 30-day extension. Any request for one-time 30-day extension must, will be reviewed upon timely receipt. If granted, your 30 days runs from the expiration of the original 30-day period. To be considered timely, your response must be faxed, emailed, or mailed to the division no later than the postmark deadline stated on the form to speed up processing in time and reduce paper. The division respectfully asks that you either fax or email your response. Please send your response to 614-644-3166, or their email at liquoredocs@com ohio.gov and their mailing address. To find out who has disclosed, disclosed an ownership interest in the permit application, you can visit com ohio.gov liquor info. Select the search, who has the closed ownership of interest tab, or ask a permit number listed on the legislative notice, or two, contact your police department or county sheriff. We have also sent them a detailed ownership information to review for any criminal background issues involving the disclosed persons. We have resources for you at com ohio.gov.gov help. Never miss out on when renewal applications are due. Sign up for emails at com ohio.gov/stayinformed. Thank you for your, thank you in advance for your cooperation in visiting license section.
I need a motion to refer this to health and safety.
Do we now go apply?
That's what we'll find out Thursday.
I'll make a motion to refer to health and safety.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Sherrick and a second- I have a motion by Ms. Sherrick and a second by Mrs. DeShawn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Miranda, can you work with Mrs. DeShawn between the two of you to have all that information ready for Thursday? Thank you. Next is a letter submitted by Clarissa Slater.
If you want me to read it, I could read it. Yep. This is dated April 28th, 2024. It's from Clarissa Slater, 3645 State Route 4, Bussaras, Ohio 44820. It's directed or submitted to council members. Dear council members, I am writing to express my deep concerns about the business dealings of Mr. Kurt Finkhauser, the proprietor of Wavelength LLC and its relationship with the city of Bussaras. It has been confirmed that the Bussaras city has no written agreement about any of Mr. Finkhauser's business relationships regarding his business Wavelength and the city of Bussaras. Per the emailed records request I have submitted, however, it has come to the citizens' knowledge that Mr. Finkhauser has installed Wavelength as the new city internet and phone service provider. As you may know, a service or goods may be donated to the city by a city official if it passes four means tests per the Ohio Ethics Commission. The first test is necessity. The internet is an essential service, so it passes the first test. Second, the goods and services provided are a continuance and/or cannot be found at a lower cost. We will not find someone giving free internet to the city. So again, it passes this test. Requirement three is that Mr. Finkhauser's business treats the city as well as he does his other customers or better. We can presume that this is true. The last test is that he officially discloses his interest in securing a contract. If the contract didn't exist before his term, he does not participate in the deliberations or discussions of securing said contract. This test is not passed. The contract is not written down. It was undisclosed verbal contract between Mr. Finkhauser and Mr. Truka. Because of this, the public had no input or opinion to provide if they agreed or disagreed with the contract, as it did not go through the proper channels of being voted on as legislation. However, it has come to the citizens' attention that new cameras are being utilized on public lands owned and operated by Mr. Finkhauser's company, Wavelength. Therefore, Mr. Finkhauser is directly benefiting from receiving free services from the city in exchange for his services to the city. Mr. Finkhauser has advertised on his company's Facebook page that new cameras are available at Millennial Park. Millennial Park is not public land, however, the light poles that the cameras attach to excess Millennial Park are public land. It states in the revised code, section 2921.42, that Mr. Finkhauser cannot benefit from or advertise the donation. Mr. Finkhauser is in clear violation since he is advertising on his Facebook page that he's donating the service. He is also advertising Millennial Park on his Wavelength page. In addition, per the last ruling of the Ohio Ethics Commission, Mr. Finkhauser cannot do any of the following in Ohio Revised Code 2921.42A1 and revised code 102.03D prohibit Mr. Finkhauser from participating in the deliberations, discussions and discussions of the city council in any matter that would affect Wavelength's financial interest. For example, Mr. Finkhauser would be prohibited from, one, using his unique access to city personnel to influence them to select Wavelength for any new lease or secure modification to the terms of the current agreement; two, using his unique access to city information that pertained to competitors; three, securing favorable treatment for Wavelength such as expedited approval of invoices and payments. According to that Ohio ethics opinion, he is also not permitted to do the following, as in Ohio Revised Code 102.03A1. It prohibits him from representing Wavelength before the city or any state or local public agency in Ohio on matters in which he has personally participated as city council president. On multiple occasions, he has spoken directly to the full council and committees as Wavelength's proprietor. He bypassed the city council and used his unique position as council president to gain access to Mayor Truka to secure a verbal contract, violating both Ohio Revised Code 102.03A1 and Ohio Revised Code 102.03D. He also has used his unique access to city information that pertains to his competitors' Omni Fiber and Bright Speed to attempt to slow down installation for his competitor in the March 5th, 2024 city council meeting. He gave his direct input questioning Mr. Gruner. Could the city stipulate on the permit that you could only have so many machines working simultaneously? Mr. Gruner replied that they could. Mr. Finkhauser stated, so you could slow them down in that way. Mr. Finkhauser may not intend ill will for his competitors and may only be looking to protect city resources. However, he directly violates the Ethics Commission's stipulations on interference with his competitors. Despite his direct conflict of interest, he presided over the meeting and did not recuse himself. Mr. Finkhauser used his favorable position on the council to expedite a verbal agreement slash contract between himself and Mr. Truka and circumvent the council's authority to draft a lease or agreement for the public land use. By doing so, he has also violated the procedures above. Given these circumstances, I demand that Mr. Finkhauser immediately recuse himself from conversations regarding Omni Fiber and Bright Speed. I also demand that he cease representing himself as Wavelength's proprietor during council meetings, giving the opinion previously rendered by the Ohio Ethics Commission. I also insist that he reports his transgressions to the Ohio Ethics Commission. Furthermore, I call for removing all cameras and signal boosters, dishes, antennas from city land and for all Wi-Fi internet phones and any other business dealings involved Wavelength to cease until all the Ohio Ethics Commission forms an updated opinion. We must ensure that the safety and security of citizens' information through proper advisement from applicable governing agencies such as ODAS. I also demand that Mr. Finkhauser's company, Wavelength, go through the appropriate channels to obtain lease agreements for the city, street light poles, the use of city-owned towers slash antennas and any other public property slash land. I also call for a contract to ensure an ethical and secure internet and phone supply to the city compliant with all local, state and federal policies or guidelines and for that agreement to be voted on by full council. In that agreement, I call for Mr. Finkhauser's company, Wavelength, to follow all policies, procedures and guidelines set forth by the Ohio Department of Administrative Services, Ohio Information Technology Division, to ensure that all citizen data on the city's network is adequately provided and that Mr. Finkhauser cannot readily access citizens' protected data, private identifiable information, as stated, social security number, medical information, tax filing information, et cetera. I also call for Mr. Finkhauser to subject himself to any punishments if he is found of any wrongdoing, that being ethical violations, violation of any ordinances, laws or policies and procedures outlined by the city of Bussaras, state of Ohio and the US government, and to apologize to the citizens of Bussaras for his lack of transparency. I urge the citizens of Bussaras to file misfeasance charges against Mr. Finkhauser due to his apparent violation of Ohio Ethics Commission's previous opinion and the guidelines set forth. If those charges are affirmed, I call for Mr. Finkhauser to resign as Bussaras City Council President and for Wavelength to be permanently banned from supplying services to the city of Bussaras. Thank you for your time and attention to these pressing matters. I trust that you will take the necessary actions to address these concerns. I have included the evidence of my findings with this letter, signed respectfully, Clarissa Slater. And she has had some, members of the public also signed their affirmations to the letter to this council.
I need a motion to accept and file.
Send it.
Second. Motion by Ms. Sherrick, second by Mr. Hickman. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
I wish I was here on more cheery matters. Sometimes things just fall in your lap and you have to roll with it. Before I begin, I would like to state that I, a concerned citizen, have found information to attempt to bring it to light in any possible wrongdoing by a sitting member of this council. Anything I say in this meeting or anything that I've supplied to the council or any third parties will show the council and the public what impression this gives a citizen who discovers this information. Anything I state in this discussion is my best understanding of the law. I've done my due diligence to consult legal sources such as the Ohio Revised Code, the Ohio Ethics Commission and the city's law director to facilitate an understanding of the validity of my concerns and what appears to be illegal activity. I am not a lawyer. I am just a citizen. My goal today is to describe the facts as I have found them, present the evidence of those facts and to call for action to next steps. And I encourage citizens to be more engaged in government so that not to allow situations like this to occur again. None of my actions are meant to be malicious. I implore all of you to listen to your constituents' concerns about possible ethical, legal and security issues and to set aside personal feelings while I do so. Your actions today will be critical to your integrity moving forward. So with that being said, I'm Clarissa Slater. I live at 3645 State Route 4. I am a sixth-generation Bussaras area resident and I take my hometown seriously and personally. I have been here my whole life except for college and I am raising my children here. My job as a parent is to protect them and leave this place better than how I found it. As a parent, I wish for them to grow up in a safe and secure place, a place that they would like to raise their children as well. So to get into this pretty heavy situation, I just want to make sure that some basic knowledge of the situation is understood and how internet service providers work. So internet service providers can provide the internet, Wi-Fi, and also voice-over internet protocol, which is basically meaning your phone is digital instead of the hardwire. So I want to explain to you what an internet service provider can see. An internet service provider can provide communication compatibility to your computer and your internet so you can connect to the internet, you know, what have you. And what they can see. So an ISP can see your search history, your video logs, your video feed of your installed camera devices, any documents that you download, emails and anything that you open, like files, documents, what have you, can be seen by your ISP unless you're using certain security protocols such as a VPN, which is a virtual private network. Essentially, it just reroutes your identity to multiple places. It makes it harder to identify who you are or what information you're providing over the network and also another way is through encryption. However, the ISP, internet service provider, can still see some information or breadcrumbs of that data. Think of it this way, if the internet connection is a river between two ports, the ship being your, the ship can travel, which would be like your information on that river. Let's say your computer is one port and your location or wherever you're going to on the internet is the other port. The ISP can see that information travel and they can take snapshots of it. Essentially, they can copy your information and that process is called data caching. An ISP can take those snapshots of data packets and sell them to third parties. They're legally allowed to do that. So they're legally allowed to sell your data to third parties. With this information, they can gather some pretty accurate information about you, your residential address, your income, your gender, your sexual orientation, your general interests, your political affiliation, your state of health and your occupation can all be identified through algorithms through the data that you send over the internet. Now that I've established some basic understanding of what an internet service provider does, I'd like to talk about the issue at hand. I really honestly took on this journey when I brought some concerns about the Bratwurst Festival and social media usage of some of our council members. And I'm not saying that those issues aren't important, but this is definitely trumps the rest. When I started looking into this, some other citizens brought to my attention that Kurt Finkhauser was providing the city's internet for free. And I immediately recognized this as an ethical concern. So I took my inquiries to the Ohio Ethics Commission and they got me back, got back to me next day with an opinion that they issued in 2019, stating it was okay given the four tests that were written in the letter. One of the things that I want to discuss is that Mr. Finkhauser cannot financially benefit from that donation. It wasn't until after my records request was unfounded for the written contract that I realized that this was not a written contract. This was essentially a gentleman's agreement. And the very next day, a letter to the editor was released confirming my suspicions. I submitted my letter that was written to the council, to the Ethics Commission, and they were very interested and would like to send me an allegation packet. They stated that the 2019 ruling over Mr. Finkhauser was over a very specific set of scenarios. And we are almost entirely operating outside of that scope of scenarios now, in my opinion. I believe that he is using his position to gain unique access to city officials to secure preferential treatment of Wavelength. He's advertising his business dealings to increase his notoriety and personally, it appears he's personally benefiting by having access to the city light poles to mount his cameras on for free. These aspects were prohibited in the outline in the Ethics Committee's opinion in 2019, especially since Mr. Finkhauser skipped over you, the council, completely, and uses a unique access as city council president to access the administration to secure an unwritten contract. Ask yourself, if you would enter into a contract without understanding the terms? I know I wouldn't. I wouldn't give up my information without knowing what I was getting into. And this is what I believe a clear violation of ORC 721.03. And this revised code was spoken upon with the Ethics Commission, but they said that it was actually regulated by the Ohio Attorney General's Office. And they stated that even though it was in the terms used in the opinion and agreement, it is actually a lease when you're using public land. So it can't have preferential treatment and it's pretty clear that it has to be voted on by two-thirds majority by the legislative body based off of that ORC 721.03. So that should go through public lands and means. I did speak to individuals in the previous administration and their understanding was that there was no standing contract when they left office in last year, that they did not have access to public lands at all. And that was, I'm basing that off of the information I was given. I did get new information that he did have a tower lease agreement or tower lease payment in 2023. However, like I said, that directly conflicts with the information I was given from the previous administration that he was no longer leasing those. So I'm not so sure about that. That probably needs to be investigated further. So Mr. Finkhauser was providing the cameras to say that it would be better safety and security to Millennial Park. I've heard that be an argument of why he was providing it. But my question is, why didn't he just wire those into the security network? Why didn't he donate those services to the city police department so they would have access to it? I would feel like in an emergency situation, it would make more sense for them to at least just have the equipment for their use. That way, if there was a 911 call about scenario, an active shooter, that they would be able to identify and see where it was going on immediately and not be calling a third party to access that information, especially if they're unable to get a hold of. They wouldn't have that live stream ability. Mr. Finkhauser has also created issues by commenting on his competitors during full council. He really needs to separate what his personal business is from his duties as the president. It's not a good look to be talking about your competitors, even if it's in the city's best interest. It is an ethical issue. He also, like I said, go back to selling of data. We have no guarantee that he is not selling our data. That is a big problem for me. I would not want to know that any of my information, I'm not even sure what the whole scope is. I keep being told different things. I heard now they are not with the fire department, so the EMS issue may not be an issue, but there's conflicting information that no one knows what's going on. So we don't know the reach of information that he has or what he's able to see and not see, or his servers are able to see and not see in which the data that can be collected and sold. Like I said, he's legally allowed to do that as an internet service provider. Like I said, he's legally allowed to do that as an Internet service provider. And what really frustrates me is that Mr. Gerner wasn't consulted, or at least appears like he wasn't consulted in the legality of this agreement. From my understanding, we had a conversation, and that brought to light a lot of the things that I found on the 26th of April. And I don't understand why your most valuable asset, to protect yourself from any legal action or litigation, giving this situation not be consulted. I don't think that you fully understand. Maybe you do, I don't know. But I'm really concerned that if our data's been compromised, if there's been, you know, like the security of his network itself isn't up to snuff, that we could be looking at compromised data and litigation. And that's not something I want for the city, especially since we're already in a budget crisis. And the question is, you know, we have now found out that I spoke to the administration and that they are starting to do some third-party auditing, given firewall safety threats. I'm just curious how much that stuff is going to end up totaling a cost. Are we really saving $30,000? And what are we risking if we're giving up that information or giving up that contract that we already have with -- had with Spectrum? They have a full legal team that knows what they can and can't do. I mean, Mr. Finkhauser seems like he's a self-made man, and that's great. I wish the best for him, but he's one person. He's not a whole legal team. He doesn't have 50 Brian Gernards running around making sure he's doing what he can and can't do. He doesn't have an entire team of IT professionals making sure that his network is secure and that our data isn't being saved improperly or could be hacked or even broken into. I mean, we don't know what they're saving, what he's not saving, if he's not saving any of our information at all, or, you know, if he's downloading it and saving it on his servers or internal databases. We don't know. And most of you weren't even aware that Mr. Finkhauser had switched over until a new Wi-Fi came through. On the April 18th or April 16th, you guys brought your tablets up and you couldn't access the Internet. And to some of you, I don't know if this is everyone, we're told that we just changed the Wi-Fi password, and he had to enter the Wi-Fi password for you. I just don't think that's acceptable, that some of you had no idea what was going on and why. Why would it be shielded from you unless there's something to hide? That's just the impression that I get, that this has just been completely shrouded in mystery, that we don't even know what's quite going on. I know that when I asked UC to speak to the administration, I had heard that he wanted me to have all my encounters with anyone, you guys, administration, whatever, recorded because he was accusing me that I was going to defame him. But really, how is it defamation if you're doing something and you're not telling people and the citizens bring up a concern that's not defamation? That's just concern for our community. I don't want us to be in a situation where is, you know, we're in a conflict of interest and we're put into long litigation that might cost us additional money. He then turned around and self-admitted that he had this fully installed by March 25th. I mean, so you guys almost went a whole month, some of you, without even knowing this was happening in the city? It just baffles my mind. And, you know, he had access to at least a 911 service center. He is not providing police access. I have had to go and ask these questions, and I've been bothering people, and I don't want to. This is not what I want to do. I just don't understand how no one else has asked these questions in our city government. It's just, I'm frustrated that I've had to take the time. This somehow fell in my lap. But, I mean, he was get access -- he provided temporary phone lines to the police department. So what access did he have to their lines? Where I've heard speculation, or someone has told me, that supposedly they're all intermingled together, the Spectrum lines, his lines, the hard lines that they supposedly still use for phones, they're all in the same location. So who is the other expert looking at these things? The expert in the room or the expert in this situation is Mr. Finkhauser, and the rest of us are just having to take his word for what it is? And I just don't accept that as a citizen. We should have checks and balances for a reason, and we should know what exactly he has access to. And so, you know, in my opinion, through logic and reason, we find that he's violating laws, and you are welcome to review through that packet. But we have to protect citizens' information. And what assurances do we have that he isn't breaking laws and procedures we don't know of? And that goes back to having a whole legal team for Spectrum or, you know, Omni Fiber. They have entire teams that work on this. And he's only one guy, and I don't mean that as a slam. I mean, it's just, he can only do so much. And like I said, I heard that we're doing a third-party firewall penetration test, but why aren't we utilizing Ohio Department of Administrative Services IT department? They have consultations for state agencies to have these tests done, these full audits done. We need to know exactly what he's doing, where he's doing it. That's just transparency, and that's the platform he ran on. So I did omit some things because I heard that EMS is no longer a factor in this, but again, it was a question that had to be asked, you know? But EMS supposedly has a different secure line that they use that's separate from Wavelength. But I know working in medical billing that, you know, itemized statements, things like that, still have medical information on it, and if those are being sent around on emails and they're being accessed on Wavelength instead of on the secure access, that still could be a HIPAA issue, which also puts us at risk, again, for litigation. I really hope that Mr. Finkhauser's intentions are for the best. We can assume them. That's not our decision to make. But you must determine if this evidence provided to you is substantial enough to move forward with like a special investigator or prosecutor. And if you commit to protecting citizens' private information, even if Mr. Finkhauser's best intentions is to save the city money and be a good steward of the city, we have to have assurances that our data is being protected and that it's being used ethically. However, given the lack of transparency, the council, the citizens of Bucyrus, I fear that his intentions are not for the betterment of Bucyrus. So I call for the administration, the council, to stop using Wavelength until we ensure citizens' data is protected ethically and securely. Like I said, IT, I know there's another IT agency coming in to firewall penetration, but I think it needs to be a full audit all the way up the line. How do we know, once it leaves your internal servers here, what's going on in Wavelength? Where is he saving that data? Are they going out there and checking that? And I know that gets costly, but that's assurances we have to have. And I do urge that the city draft legislation and request a financial audit of Wavelength to ensure that he is not making money off of our data. And I do urge that each and every applicable state agency is contacted to ensure that we have not already been compromised either by your ethics or consumer data. Any changes thus far isn't going to roll back the clock on what has already happened. And I really thank you for your time. Thank you for complying to numerous records requests, talking to me on the phone, talking to me in person. I really hope you review these matters impartially, and I'm agreeable to any inquiries you may have at this time. Thank you.
May I ask you a question?
Yeah, of course.
Are you going to turn everything over to the Ethics Commission?
I did call on that letter for -- I've been trying to be completely transparent with this process. I presented everything to you first. So it is my right to do so. They asked for that to be done confidentially, but I have not done so yet because I am trying to afford the city and Mr. Finkhauser to do that themselves. But that is something that I am willing to do if I need to.
I would say, so I've drafted a letter based upon your concerns, based upon what the administration and I have been talking about, to get an updated ethics opinion. Because like you and I had talked about, 2019 was very fact-specific. Things have changed. There are different things. So I would like them to weigh in on the propriety of what we're up to. Tomorrow morning at 8:00 AM, the outside third-party group, and they're not just doing a penetration testing, they're doing a full-scale analysis of all of our IT needs, which is probably long overdue, not just because of the Internet, but just because in the realm of technology, everything becomes obsolete very quickly. Are the routers that we have from five years ago even any good? Is our security systems up to date? And all of those good things, our servers all secured? And so, and I -- we have talked about price, and we're looking at hopefully under $5,000, which even without the Internet concern is probably something that the city should be doing, since we don't have a full-time, on-staff IT person at this point. And that's something that I understand that the budget does not necessarily have $150,000 for an IT department, but that would be awesome to have an IT department. I mean, there's -- I mean, I don't know, but we don't know what we don't know, right? And I know nothing about technology, so we rely on experts. I know the county has two IT professionals that are on staff 24, not 24, but 40 hours a week. Not that we can make that decision or hire somebody tomorrow, but we do have a third-party that we contract with to troubleshoot things. But I think that this, from the administration and my point of view, this was more of an evaluation, and they'd tell us proactively what we should be doing, not retroactively, you know, what isn't working. I mean, somebody to stay on top of things and know, moving forward, what to look for. And they, the group that we use is the group that does our police departments' IT services, and then they use an outside third-party to do their firewall assessments and things to that effect.
Okay. I'm glad to hear that was more than a firewall penetration test.
Yes.
I'm just, I'm really just worried that, like, you don't want this downline. And a lot of this is not speculation. I did have conversations with, because I had a friend in college who is now IT network security. This is not things that have been, you know, coming out of left field, but I just, I really just worry that the whole system is checked. I mean, and the thing is, I don't know how you, if there's rules and guidelines that he should be following at his place of business for our data. I don't know. Those are questions that really the city should have assurances of.
Yeah, and that's sort of not only evaluating our, I don't know, hardware internally, but then also giving us an opinion based upon our providers and what should we assure from our providers. And you talked about data caching and selling information and all those things. That's what we're trying to gather, an opinion based upon those concerns and what, you know, industry standards would be. But I mean, I spent a lot of time talking to you, and I, yeah, I mean, it's a lot of things that I don't understand, and that's why we're trying to do what we can do to ensure that what we are doing is appropriate and...
Yeah. Yeah, I just, like, this is just personal opinion, but I feel like the person in the room who is the expert shouldn't be the one with the access.
Oh, for sure. And that's, yeah, and we talked about that. Kurt and I have talked about that. Like, Kurt, you could be the most pure-hearted person in the world, but I gotta hear it from somebody outside of that. I mean, that's just, you know, I don't know. You have to have a third-party evaluate that need.
Mrs. Sharpe?
I have a question for Mr. Gerner. Mr. Gerner, is the contract or whatever between Mr. Ratliff and Kurt, does that protect him with all of this in any way?
Protect whom?
Kurt, from all of these allegations.
No, Kurt, it's not a contract. It's an ethics opinion or an advisory opinion. Mr. Ratliff reached out to the Ethics, Ohio Ethics Commission, and based upon a specific set of facts that was provided to them, they gave guidance based upon that. And so what we're going to do now, it's drafted, I just have to mail it, is...
Like, upgrade it?
Yeah, say, okay, well, these are the facts and circumstances that have changed.
I would, as a council member and somebody that knows Kurt, I'm kind of overwhelmed by all this, but a lot of things that have been said, if you know Kurt, that he would never do this. But I understand too, you know, the people's point of view. I would be satisfied if what is in writing now that Mr. Ratliff had could be updated to cover Kurt so nothing like this could come up against him. I'm sure he never thought this was going to hit him like this.
Well, and I think that...
Excuse me?
The facts and circumstances change rapidly. The technology changes rapidly, and so it's just beneficial to, as those facts change, assure that whatever was in 2019, and it's not necessarily, I mean, I don't think that it protects Kurt in any manner. I think it's simply us checking off all of the boxes. And I don't think that it matters who the provider is or who, I mean, on all of these. It's just something that if you're going to do this, and I think that the goal originally was we would realize the savings, but in order to do that and to do that appropriately, we need to make sure that all of our bases are checked, and we have our security analysis, and we have our ethical analysis. And then from there, let, I mean, there might be other things that the Ethics Commission would like us to find out or investigate, and there would also be things that this, I think it's King Office or King, I forget what it is, but COSI, they may send us on and say, these are the other things that you need to follow up in. And unless you can assure this, this, and this from your Internet service provider by us independently accessing his stuff, then the risk is not worth it. And that's, I guess, my point is, I don't know what I don't know, and that's why we want to have a full analysis from the technological and the, you know, ethical side of it.
Well, I would like to personally say that when I'm at Allmiller Park or if I'm sitting up at T Square in the Pelican House or wherever, and I'm on my Internet, the first person I want to thank for me being able to do that would be Kurt Finkhauser. Thank you.
Mr. Me?
So are we going to go to the Ethics Commission and get their opinion on all this, correct? That was the point of my question.
Yes, we're asking them for their opinion based upon the facts that are currently surrounding this issue.
That's what I want.
Updated.
Because I want, before we make another decision here, I want to see what their ethics are.
Yeah, so it's sitting on my desk. I wanted to come here tonight, gather any of their information, and then it'll get out in the mail tomorrow morning. I can't call them, and they won't issue an advisory opinion. I mean, they'll talk to me, but I won't have an actual advisory opinion unless I submit it in writing.
I've been there, so, yeah, I know.
May I ask a question? Is there any, if, based off that report, if any contracts are maintained with Wavelength, would that be then in writing so we can have an understanding of what exactly is being provided where, just as a point of transparency?
Yeah, I think that that was something that you and I talked about the first time, that putting this in writing is also another step that we would need to do from the city's standpoint, just so that all of our goals and expectations and rights and responsibilities are outlined.
And then I guess this is another question for you, I'm sorry, but the 723, I can't remember which exactly subsection it was, but...
Public bidding on leased property.
Yes. My concern is the Ethics Commission does line out that says that even though we're considering it an agreement, that it's considered a lease legally. In legal terms, it's considered a lease. I would just hope that the city would, or the council, would move to have that voted on or there's be some sort of contract or agreement on that in writing as well, since that should go through council.
Yeah, and I think probably that's something that you guys, as council, could refer to public lands. Because in my understanding, I guess... public lands, because in my understanding, I guess, that issue is an issue absolutely, but not, in my opinion, as dire and as drastic as the security and what's going on in here. So I spend a lot more time on the security aspect and talking to COSI to try to get them to tell me what we need to do and trying to find out if they could do it, or if I was just talking gibberish and they didn't even know what I was talking about. So, yes, that's also an issue that will, I think that it would probably behoove City Council to put it into public lands and at least at that point we can discuss it, but.
Mr. Hickman?
That was gonna be my point, moving forward. We should probably have these things referred to the Public Lands and Buildings Committee, just so moving forward, that's there, we have that, it's done.
Do you wish to make that motion now?
Yes.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
I have a motion by Mr. Hickman, a second by Mrs. Sharick, to refer the Wavelength contracts to public lands and buildings. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Anybody else have anything for Mrs. Slater? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Now, on communications and petitions, we have a letter from Robin Sheets, who is chairman of the TIRC.
It's dated May 3, 2024, addressed to the council clerk. Dear Clerk, the Crawford County Tax Incentive Review Council recently met to review the tax abatement agreements for your jurisdiction. This review was done in conjunction with the annual report filed March 31, 2024 by the Enterprise Zone Manager and is for the period ending December 31, 2023. Enclosed, you will find the recommendations made by the Tax Incentive Review Council as required by the Ohio Vice Code, Section 5709.85. A legislative authority that receives from a Tax Incentive Review Council, written recommendations shall, within 60 days after receipt, hold a meeting and vote to accept, reject, or modify all or any portion of the recommendations. Should you have any questions, please feel free to contact the Enterprise Zone Manager for your jurisdiction or myself. Sincerely, Robin Sheets, Chairman of the Tax Incentive Review Council.
I need a motion to refer this to Finance.
So, ma'am, second.
I have a motion by Mrs. Sharick, a second by Mr. Hickman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. All right, that's referred to Finance.
That goes to Finance.
This Economic Development.
My apologies.
I will amend said motion to Economic Development.
All right. We have an amended motion by Mrs. Sharick to send that to Economic Development.
Second again.
And seconded by Mr. Hickman. Again, I'll ask all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. All right, that motion carries. My apologies. All right. Standing committee reports. Plating Committee, Mr. Me?
Okay. I'll go with a public notice here. The public hearing notice. A public hearing will be held at Bucyrus City Council on Tuesday, May 28, 2024, at 6:00 PM in the council chambers at City Hall, 500 South Sandusky. The Bucyrus City Council Plating Committee is considering the amendment to the Bucyrus Codified Ordinance 1187.01D and 1187.03A to accommodate the inclusion of accessory structures for home occupancy use. The City of Bucyrus and Plating Committee is also considering amendment of Codified Ordinance 1189.03B to clarify the general surfacing requirements for off-street parking and loading areas. Residents may express their opinions about the proposed zoning changes in two ways. One, by appearing at the public hearing on the May 28, 2024, 6 o'clock, 6:00 PM, where they have the opportunity to present their opinions, or by submitting a letter to Landon Hill, Interim Zoning Administrator, City of Bucyrus, 500 South Sandusky Avenue, Bucyrus, Ohio, 44820. The letter must be received prior to the public hearing so it can be entered into the official record during the hearing. For questions about the proposed zoning changes, please contact Interim City Administrator Landon Hill at 419-562-6767, extension 226.
That it? All right. Public Lands and Buildings, Ms. Sharick.
Nothing at this time.
Nothing safety, Mrs. Deschawn.
Nothing to report at this time.
Mr. Me, will you handle Finance?
I didn't have a report.
No report.
Economic Development, Mr. Hickman.
I would like to congratulate Advanced Fiber Technologies on their expansion and looking forward to their business in the future, as well as I'd like to thank David Zach for his quarter one report. Very well-written, and I will be going over the second packet for it tonight. Other than that, that's all I have.
Service, Mr. Moritz.
Final, we finally settled on some of the wording that we want to do for the Bucyrus City Ordinances, for the 900 chapter section of those ordinances. I will be going through them and we'll be coming up soon with them in committee meetings.
Mrs. Deschawn, your ad hoc committee.
Tonight, there will be a second reading of Proposed Ordinance Number 11-2024 for amendments to the Bucyrus Codified Ordinance Chapters 111 and 113.
Mr. Me, your ad hoc committee.
It's a very lengthy process, the International Property Maintenance Code. The next meeting is May 14 at 5:00. If anyone wants to come, you're invited.
Mayor Truca, drive the commission.
I have no report.
I need a motion to accept committee reports collectively.
So, ma'am, second.
I have a motion by Ms. Sharick and a second by Mr. Hickman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. All right, reports of the city officers. Mayor Truca?
I have no report.
Service Director Starner?
Thank you, Mr. Pro-Chair. What's that? Pro-Tam, there you go. After meeting with both Arcadius and Westler Engineering, we have decided to make the decision to go with Westler Engineering for our design build for the wastewater treatment plant. There was a committee of six members of administration and then held a discussion in which the company, which this company was chosen. That's number one. The administration would like to amend Resolution Number 210-2024 from Arcadius to Westler Engineering. This is an EPA requirement for the, because of the change in the build designer, I would like to refer this to Public Lands and Buildings and Finance Committee for, as an emergency. In addition, Eric Davis from Westler spoke with the OEP, from, on May 2, May 2, 2024, David Smith, mentioned that the resolution is needed to proceed with the planning loan and needs to be passed by council because of timing. This will need to be as an emergency as well to get the OEP hands by the end of the, by the end of the month. We're gonna try to get this through June 28. So, Mr. Smith has provided me with a copy of a resolution I have attached, which I didn't, I didn't put it in here, but I have a copy for you. And he gets the cost together on our end, and I believe the city has already been nominating for a planning loan of $2.5 million. And fourthly, we have a chance to receive land from the land bank that's behind Kroger's. This is actually five parcels of land, which I had them here somewhere. I would read you the parcel numbers, but they're like...
Really small.
Oh, here, here they are. But, so it's like 1864, 6,000, 1864, 7,000, 1874, 40,000, 400,000, 1874, 1,000, and 1874, 2,000. But anyway, this is from the land bank. We have to have a resolution in order to get that through, so I'd like to refer that to Lands and Buildings for your approval.
Did you have one about a police vehicle as well or not?
We're not 100% sure yet. We're working on that one.
Want to refer it in case we want to discuss it Thursday?
The police vehicle?
Yeah.
Do we have...
I believe that's in the auditor's report.
Yeah.
Sorry to take your thunder. We'll get to that later. All right. Is that all, Mr. Starner?
That is all I have at this time.
All right. So we need a motion to refer amending Resolution 210-2024 to Public Lands and Building and Finance, to refer a planning loan to Public Lands and Building and Finance, and to refer receiving land from the land bank to Public Lands and Building.
I'll make that collective motion.
I'll second that collective motion. I have a motion by Ms. Sharick and a second by Mr. Moritz. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Call Director Gergen.
Thank you. So as Mr. Moritz said, Mr. Wyatt, Mr. Dunn, Mr. Starner, Mr. Hill, Mr. Moritz have been looking over Part Nine of the Bucyrus Codified Ordinance, which deals with Streets, Utilities, and Public Services Code. To that end, they've come up with revisions which are believed to be necessary. I think that Part Nine is already in the Service Committee. So I was just going to refer the entire Part Nine, because some of it's in Chapter 903, some of it's in Chapter 925, and rather than make individual referrals, refer the entire part, and so we can at least start going through those in committee and making those changes now that they've come up with their recommendations. We already talked about the CHIP program, so that's in committee. Then, so pursuant to the annexation agreement that we signed, or that the city signed between Bucyrus Township and the City of Bucyrus, and in accordance with the Ohio Vice Code, Section 503.07, both the Ohio Vice Code and the annexation agreement says that the legislation, legislative authority of the municipal corporation must petition the Board of County Commissioners to conform the boundaries of both the township and the city. This is simply City Council passing a resolution asking the commissioners to get rid of taxing District 55 and get rid of those two parcels and remove them from Bucyrus Township and place them in the City of Bucyrus and create the border on that west end. Obviously, as you guys are all aware, that's my property. Based upon the fact that this is a technical step, I don't think that there would be an issue with me just preparing the legislation. But if you guys want me to have outside council prepare that, that would be fine as well. And then also, what we would have to do is provide Bucyrus Township with 10-day notice before you, before City Council votes on that resolution, indicating that we anticipate changing, or asking the county to change the boundary lines. So I would refer that to, or ask to refer that to, the boundary confirmation issued to the Plating Committee for further discussion.
Is that the end of your report?
I think so.
All right. So I'll entertain a motion to refer the Bucyrus Township, removing taxing District 55 to the Plating Commission and, or to Plating Committee, as well as referring the entirety of Part Nine of the Bucyrus Codified Ordinance as the Service.
I'll make that motion quietly.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Sharick and a second by Mr. Hickman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Auditor Lewis?
The end of April has ushered in good news for the City of Bucyrus. We have had an excellent tax season. The city is up 12%, or $64,941.26 in the general fund for April 2024 collections compared to April 2023. In the Safety Forces Fund, the City of Bucyrus is up 70%, or $184,584.57 compared to 2023. I also wanted to note that our income tax office has been working with the state attorney general's office to bring in over $100,000 so far this year. That is already over the amount we collected during the entire year of 2023. From all of us at the City of Bucyrus to all those who file their taxes, thank you. And if you had to wait in that line, your dedication is very, very appreciated. I would like to refer to Finance Committee appropriating a total of $30,000 for the possible purchase of a police vehicle in the Safety Forces Fund. We're anticipating a very good deal on this vehicle. The city mechanic actually went to inspect it today, and it seems like it was pretty good, their thinking. I haven't talked too much about, to the police chief or mechanic about it. The police department and I would just like to have this referred, well, for the inspection in case it goes well, but it seemed like it went pretty well. So, that is it.
I'll entertain a motion to refer the appropriations for the purchase of a police cruiser to Finance.
So, ma'am, second.
I have a motion by Ms. Sharick and a second by Mr. Moritz. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. That motion carries. Nothing from the treasurer, nothing from the police chief. We have a March 2024 snapshot from the fire chief that's in your packet. I would entertain a motion to accept all city officers' reports.
So, ma'am, I'll second that. Mr. Hickman can have first.
President Pro-Tam Myers. So, I forgot about this, but on the maintenance agreement, which is Proposed Resolution 218-2024, I finally got a rough draft of the maintenance agreement. And in general, it's going to stay the same, but the map of who's responsible for what is a little bit different than I outlined, so I can pass that around. But by and large, we're going to, well, you can read it, but the map is different. After consultation with Dylan Wyatt and Jeff Dunn, there's going to be some parts that are cooperative between us and the Parks District, and then some parts that we're responsible for and some parts that they're solely responsible for. It's a little bit different, and that will be reflected in the final version of the maintenance agreement. So either you guys could pass that with the understanding, or pass the second reading with the understanding that the final maintenance agreement is going to reflect the changes on the second sheet, or we could table that and come back with the maintenance agreement at the future date.
So that's on a second reading, is it?
It is, yeah. And I, I mean, the road is not built, so the maintenance agreement is not necessarily highly important, obviously. So it would not cause undue delay if you wanted to table that.
I will address that when we get to that.
Yeah. I'll email it to you. I just printed that off later on my way out the door.
All right. Mr. Hickman, you'd made a motion to accept the city officers' reports with a second by Ms. Sharick. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. This is a time where we allow visitors' input regarding reports of standing and special committees of city officers. Does anybody wish to address? Seeing none, we'll move on to consideration of proposed legislation for the first time.
Proposed Ordinance 21-2024, it's the reduction of appropriations. Amending and supplementing Ordinance Number 50-2023, being the annual appropriations ordinance for 2024, by decreasing the current balances in the personal services line item by $1,44,336.42, the contractual services line item by $66,373.08, the materials and supplies line item by $43,877.87, the capital outlay line item by $87,361.79, and the transfers line item by $139,423.16. Offer said line items being within the police department category, also decreasing the current balances in the personal services line item by $1,199,077.57, the contractual services line item by $27,484.26, the materials and supplies line item by $31,351.80, the capital outlay line item by $26,867.42, and the transfers line item by $183,549.72. Offer said line items being within the fire department category, and all offer said line items and categories being within the Program One Security of Persons and Properties subparagraph within the general fund and declaring an emergency. Proposed Ordinance 22-2024, it's appropriations for the CSO 5. Amending and supplementing Ordinance 50-2023, being the annual appropriations ordinance for 2024, by appropriating from unappropriated sewage replacement funds, the sum of $90,000 to the capital outlay line item within the sewage replacement category within the sewage replacement subparagraph and declaring an emergency. Proposed Ordinance 23-2024, it's transfers for the water filtration. Amending and supplementing Ordinance 50-2023, being the annual appropriations ordinance for 2024, by decreasing the current balances in the other uses line item by $10,000 within the Waterwork Administration category, and in the personal services line item by $10,000 within the filtration category, with both categories... $10,000 within the filtration category, with both categories being within the water work subparagraph, and increasing the current balance in the contractual services line item by $20,000 within the filtration category within the water work subparagraph and declaring an emergency.
Need a motion to accept those as a first reading.
I have one more.
Oh.
It was amended later.
My apologies again.
We have proposed ordinance 24-2024, it's appropriations to Fund 202. Amending and supplementing ordinance 50-2023 being the annual appropriations ordinance for 2024 by appropriating from unappropriated general funds the sum of $2,800,000 to the transfers line item within the general government category within Program 7, general government subparagraph within the general fund, further appropriating from unappropriated safety forces levy funds the sum of $1,044,336.42 to the personal services line item, $66,373.8 to the contractual services line item, $43,870.87 to the materials and supplies line item, $87,361.79 to the capital outlay line item, and $139,423.16 to the transfers line item. Offer said line items being within the police department category, and finally appropriating from unappropriated safety forces levy funds the sums of $1,199,77.57 to the personal services line item, $27,484.26 to the contractual services line item, $31,351.80 to the materials and supplies line item, $26,867.42 to the capital outlay line item, and $183,549.72 to the transfers line item. Offer said line items being within the fire department category, and all for said line items and categories being within the safety forces levy subparagraph and declaring an emergency.
All right, now entertain a motion to accept those as the first reading.
Make a motion to accept all.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Mr. Moritz and a second by Mr. Hickman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carries. This is a public participation. Any member of the general public may present their input or comments on legislation that has been read for the first time. Seeing none, as we get into consideration of proposed legislation for the second time, Mr. Gernert brought up a question with the maintenance agreement, which is proposed Resolution 218-2024. There's been a slight change to that. Do you all wish to proceed with Mr. Gernert making the changes in time for the third reading, or do you wish to table this piece of legislation?
Proceed. I'm buying with proceeding.
I'm buying with it too.
Okay. All right, consideration of proposed legislation for the second time.
I had a question about separating these.
Yeah, so.
We can, yeah, we can vote that way appropriately. That's fine.
We're good to go?
You're good to go.
Proposed ordinance 11-2024, that's Besire's Codified Ordinance 111 and Besire's Codified Ordinance 113. An ordinance amending and supplementing chapters 111 Council, Rules of Council, and 113 Ordinance and Resolutions of Title III Legislative Part 1 Administrative Code of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Besire's, Ohio. Proposed Resolution 216-2024, it's the bed tax agreement with Besire's Chamber of Commerce, authorizing and directing the public service safety director on behalf of the City of Besire's, Ohio, to enter into an agreement with the Besire's Tourism and Visitors Bureau, Inc., to promote tourism and to attract visitors and conventions to the Besire's city area retroactive to January 1, 2024 through December 31, 2025, at a cost of 50% of the bed tax collected pursuant to Besire's Codified Ordinance, Chapter 181, ORC Section 717.20 and ORC 5739.08. Further authorizing and directing the City Besire's order to issue a warrant or warrants from the appropriate appropriation or appropriations in payment of for said services. Proposed Resolution 218-2024, it's the maintenance agreement Crawford Partnership. Be it resolved at the Council of the City of Besire's hereby authorizes and directs the mayor of the City of Besire's to enter into a maintenance agreement with the Crawford Parks District for the service road located throughout Unger Park and Almiler Park. Resolution 219-2024, it's the repeal of 218-2021. A resolution repealing Besire City Council Resolution 218, 2021 in its entirety. Proposed Resolution 220-2024, it's the transfer of land between the City of Besire's and the partnership. Be it resolved at the Council of the City of Besire's hereby authorizes and direct the mayor of the City of Besire's, Ohio, to transfer certain real property owned by the City of Besire's, being permanent parcel numbers 07-000197.001, 07-0001195.002, 07-0001195.003, by quick claim deed to the Crawford Park District.
All right. For proposed Resolution 219, 2024, I'm going to ask a clerk to do a roll call vote to accept as the second reading after I get the motions. So I need a motion to accept 219, 2024 as a second reading.
I move to accept proposed Resolution 219, 2024 as a second reading, and that is repealing Resolution 218, 2021, which deals with repealing Resolution 218, 2021, which authorized the service safety director to enter into a permanent agreement with the Besire's Broughtworth Festival, Inc., to provide necessary safety forces and cleaning services at no charge for the Broughtworth Festival.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Myers.
Abstain.
DeShawn.
Yes.
Shireman.
Yes.
Moritz.
Yes.
Sherrick.
Abstain.
Hickman.
No.
Me.
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, for the other ones, which would be proposed ordinance 11, 2024, proposed Resolution 216, 2024, proposed Resolution 218, 2024, and proposed Resolution 220, 2024, I'll entertain a motion to accept those as a second reading.
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Ms. Sherrick, second by Mr. Moritz. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same.
Aye.
All right, any member of the general public may present their input or comments on legislation that has been read for the second time.
May I say something?
Yes, ma'am.
Just as a matter of clarification and information for the individuals that are sitting here tonight and those out in the public, the reason that we did a separate voting on proposed Resolution 219, 2024, dealing with the Broughtworth Festival permanent agreement, after obtaining an advisory opinion from our law director, Mr. Gernert, along with a conflict of interest with Mr. Myers being the festival director, he has also agreed that there is a conflict of interest with Ms. Ciara and Sherrick serving or voting as well with anything to do with the Broughtworth Festival because of her craft show chair position that she is holding. Thank you.
Thanks. Good evening. Clarissa Slater, 3645 ZR4. I guess I have a question. Miranda, did you get this? Did they get this?
I have four.
Okay, okay. I just didn't know, did you all have a chance to review that? This, well, you probably shouldn't.
Yeah, I believe this would be something for you to discuss in committee rather than in full council meeting, so now you can discuss that during the Finance Committee on Thursday.
Okay, that's fine. I will hear your person.
Thank you.
Any other public participation? All right, referring back to the originating committee, proposed ordinance 11-2024 is referred back to ad hoc. Proposed ordinance 21-2024 is referred to Finance. Proposed ordinance 22, 2024 referred to Finance. Proposed ordinance 23, 2024 referred to Finance. Proposed ordinance 24, 2024 to Finance. Proposed Resolution 216, 2024 to Economic Development. Proposed Resolution 218, 2024, back to public lands and buildings. Proposed Resolution 219, 2024, referred back to Finance, and proposed Resolution 220, 2024, referred back to public lands and buildings. Committee reports on pending legislation. Ms. DeShawn, your ad hoc committee?
Yes, ad hoc is favorable to proposed ordinance number 11-2024, dealing with Besire's Codified Ordinance Chapters 111 and 113.
Finance, Mr. Me.
Proposed ordinance 21, 2024, reduction in appropriations, favorable. Proposed ordinance 22, 2024, appropriations for CSO 5, favorable. Appropriations 23, 2024, transfer water filtrations, favorable. And proposed ordinance 24, 2024, appropriations funds 202 to Finance, favorable. And proposed Resolution 219, 2024, repeal of 218-2021, Finance, favorable.
All right. Proposed Resolution 216, 2024, Economic Development.
Economic Development is favorable to proposed Resolution 216, 2024, bed tax freedom.
And public lands and buildings.
Public lands and buildings is favorable to proposed Resolution 218, 2024, maintenance agreement. Public lands and buildings is favorable to proposed Resolution 220, 2024, transfer of land.
All right, for further consideration of pending legislation for the second and third reading of proposed ordinance 21-2024, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the reading of the caption and text, and declare an emergency?
So moved.
Second.
Hickman?
Yes.
Moritz?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
DeShawn?
Yes.
Shireman?
Yes.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed ordinance 21-2024?
So moved. Second.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Hickman?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
DeShawn?
Yes.
Shireman?
Yes.
Moritz?
Yep.
Ordinance 21-2024 is duly adopted. For the second and third reading of proposed ordinance 22-2024, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the reading of the caption and text, and declare an emergency?
So moved.
Second as emergency.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Moritz?
Yes.
Hickman?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
DeShawn?
Yes.
Shireman?
Yes.
Moritz?
Yes.
Ordinance 22-2024 is duly adopted. For the second and third reading of proposed ordinance 23-2024, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the reading of the caption and text, and declare an emergency?
So moved. Second.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Hickman?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
DeShawn?
Yes.
Shireman?
Yes.
Moritz?
Yes.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed ordinance 23-2024?
So moved.
Second.
Who would you like to second that?
Anything.
Mr. Moritz.
Hickman?
Yes.
Moritz?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Hickman, I mean, me?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
DeShawn?
Yes.
Shireman?
Yes.
Ordinance 23-2024 is duly adopted. For proposed ordinance 24-2024, do I hear for the second and third readings, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the reading of the caption and text, and declare an emergency?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Hickman.
Okay. Sherrick?
Yes.
Hickman?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
DeShawn?
Yes.
Shireman?
Yes.
Moritz?
Yes.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed ordinance 24-2024?
Make a motion to adopt?
Second.
Moritz?
Yes.
Hickman?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
DeShawn?
Yes.
Shireman?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Ordinance 24-2024 is duly adopted. Is there any old or unfinished business anyone wishes to bring up?
I do have, I just want to make sure Tom that you provide a copy for the service for a service guy so he can get a look at it sometime.
Send it to me.
There's some, I think there's some questions in that that I'm supposed to figure out.
Okay.
I think there's some red issues that I was supposed to, oh, look at that.
At least give us time to look at what we do have.
Right.
How about any new miscellaneous business anyone wishes to bring up? Mrs. DeShawn?
I've had several phone conversations with Mr. Gary Diver, who resides at the south edge of the city limits at 1928 Marion Road. He is interested in having a one-third acre pond placed on his two-acre property. In talking with Landon Hill, our interim zoning administrator, our city codified ordinances currently make, no reference, two ponds, so I am requesting a referral of this matter to the Plating Committee. In talking with Mr. Diver, he has informed me that he will be available to meet with the committee at its May 23, 24 committee meeting.
Is that your motion to refer that?
Yes, please.
Second.
All right, I have a motion by Mrs. DeShawn and a second by Mr. Me. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same, yeah. That motion carries. Any other newer miscellaneous business? All right, I do not believe that Mr. Fankhauser needs excuse since he was here at the start of the meeting, so we're all here. Referrals, Miranda.
We have amending Resolution 210-2024 to public lands and buildings and finance, planning loan to public lands and buildings and finance, appropriations for the purchase of a police cruiser to Finance, the CHIP grant to the Economic Development Committee, liquor license to health and safety, wavelength contract to public lands and buildings, tax incentive review council to Economic Development Committee, receiving of land from land bank to public lands and buildings, Part 9 of Besire's Codified Ordinance is the service, removal of taxing District 55 and the parcels that go with the plating, and then amending the codified ordinances to include ponds to plating as well.
All right, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
First by Ms. Sherrick, second by Mr. Hickman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. We are adjourned at 9:08.